Will the press kind of give me a thumbs up when you're ready to go? Okay.
That's a one, two.
Okay. There, okay. Okay. Anyone not good? Okay. Good morning, everyone. Let me say first thank you to the media for being here for this very important press conference regarding the vacancy vote on last evening by the Newark Municipal Council. Before I begin, I want to introduce my other colleagues who I stood with and who stood together for democracy and against voter suppression in the city of Newark on last evening. To my right, Councilwoman at large Mildred Crump, spelled C-R-U-M-P. Behind me is South Ward Councilman Raz Baraka, spelled B-A-R-A-K-A. And to my left, Councilman of the Central Ward, Councilman Darren Sharif, spelled S-H-A-R-I-F. And my name is Ronald C. Rice, and I am the West Ward Councilman for the city of Newark, spelled R-I-C-E. I'm gonna get right to the point. The vote taken on last evening was not only illegal and unconstitutional, but it was a slap in the face to every resident and voter in the city of Newark. We have just come from an election where voter suppression and people who have anti-democratic ideals tried to steal an election for president, and they were unsuccessful. Likewise, this council, these group of council members believe that they are on bad grounds legislatively, statutorily, and by the law in terms of how this election process actually occurred. Specifically, the mayor violated New Jersey statute annotated Chapter 40, colon 69A dash 41, which allows the mayor to vote only, only in the process if there is a tie for the vacancy vote. If there is a 4-4 tie, a 3-3 tie, the mayor can vote. There was no tie. The mayor's vote was illegal and against the state statute governing these appointments. The reality is, is that, secondly, to be specific, the mayor relied on a statute 40, colon 69A, I'm sorry, relied on a statute 40A, colon 9 dash 132, which allows the mayor to vote in circumstances. The problem is, is that it allows the mayor to vote in certain circumstances unless otherwise provided by law. It is provided by law. 40, colon 69A dash 41 is more specific than the statute that the mayor references as his power to do what he did. And specific construction, as any one year first L law student will tell you, specific construction of any statute trumps a general construction which the mayor's basis is on. Third, his statute referencing number one and number two, this city council is prepared to go to court to seek an order to show cause. We are on good moral ground, we are on good legal ground because a similarly situated thing happened in Hoboken, where most recently Mayor Zimmer voted for the appointment of a council person in Hoboken, Mr. Doyle. There was also not a 4-4 tie or a tie of any significance. She then decided to place her vote, getting the necessary vote to make this person a councilman. The courts on yesterday struck that down. We are similarly situated, and we feel the court will strike this down as well. Fourth, the mayor used the city departments to carry out a political agenda. And let me be very specific about this. We are alleging that there is potential collusion with the Corporation Council and Clerk's Office regarding this. Several points of law were explained to certain members of the city council regarding what the process should be, and certain other council people received other information regarding what pieces of statutory language apply in this particular vacancy. The reality is, is that the Corporation Council never met with the entire council on this, nor the Clerk's Office met with the entire council on this. Only some folks, not others. It appears that some folks on the city council are more equal than others. Lastly, there will be an opportunity for those of us that are here to have a rally next week, which we will give you the information about specifically. But let me just make this clear, and make this abundantly clear. This council worked well together for six years. We were together even when we were separated by opinion. What happened yesterday was a bull guard and a power grab by this administration on the second floor into a body of the third floor, something that has not been seen in these chambers in decades. And the reality is, this cannot stand, not when we have a mayor who promises and preaches progressive politics, inclusionary politics, and talks about this around the country, but denies democracy to the very residents who elected him and who he represents here at home. We're saying, simply put, allow the council to do our due diligence by virtue of what the statute allows us to do, and after 30 days, if we do not come to a conclusion as an entire council, this thing can go to a vote by the people. Lastly, and let me just say this quite simply, the mayor showed this in 2006. We had a similar situation, where we had two candidates who wanted to be council president, and he used his ability to be conciliatory and to bring more light than heat to a situation, and the mayor promised and said suggested that we should have a council president and a council vice president. That is working in the realms and under the guise of good democracy. That is working in the realm and the guise of transparency and accountability, not inserting yourself into a vote using precarious general statutory language to support that when there is specific language that you have directly violated and that the courts have struck down in one other municipality just the day before. And so those are the things that we wanted to talk about. I'm going to bring Councilwoman Crump here to speak more specifically on this issue, and we will follow suit with Councilman Sharif, and then Councilman Baraka.
Good morning. I want to first thank Councilman Rice and my council colleagues for organizing this press conference. The truth must be told, and it must be told to the people who are watching each one of your channels today. There is a myth going around this country that Cory A. Booker as mayor has the interest of Newark at heart. That is not true. Ask any person on this corner, on the street corner, what is their opinion? Here in the city, we live with him, and so we know what he's doing, how he does it, and so we're here today to make clear, as a result of his actions yesterday, that he is not good for the city of Newark. I want to speak to the issue of a female, because that is one of the ruses that they used in terms of recommending Ms. Bates. I know that everyone in the city of Newark who knows me knows that, yes, I desperately want to have another female, but I must tell you, it has to be the right female. It has to be someone who has integrity, has to be someone who will vote her conscience, someone who will not be a stooge for Steve Atabato nor Cory A. Booker. What happened yesterday has divided this community like nothing I have ever seen since the riots of 1967. We now have the Spanish and the Portuguese on one side, and the blacks and African-Americans on the other side. And this is the result for a seat, for just one seat? So I say to you, as I stand before you, we're asking not just for the statute to be reviewed and injunction to be declared, I am asking, Mildred Crump, I am asking that we forward this manipulation of justice to the Attorney General of the United States of America. Somebody who is not afraid or intimidated by the money that Cory Booker has backing him. Last but not least, to those persons who are present on today, we thank you. We thank you for your presence, for not being afraid to show your face. The collusion that took place in last night should never have happened. And so as we proceed, Councilman Rice and the three of us, the four of us, will be participating even further in bringing you the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Good morning. First of all, I want to say how proud I am of all the Newark residents, that despite the despicable event that occurred in this council chamber last night, and the phrase that I used had historical significance. I said, "This will be an act that lives in infamy." And I think as we get further away from what occurred yesterday, and I'm asking that this municipal council and the four members that didn't respect the process yesterday, I'm asking that we launch an immediate investigation on the council to find out what happened when and who knew what when. Councilwoman Crump, she alluded to something. I had about 4 o'clock met with our Corporation Council on a separate matter, and the statute that was sprung on us yesterday, she never shared that information with me, never mentioned a single conversation. This council, the clerk to the council, Bob Marasco, when asked where he got the statute from, he said he got it from the Corporation Council. Now, all of us here know, the four council colleagues who are here, the four who are not here, there have been many occasions when prior to a council meeting, we got something last minute or something controversial from the administration, and what the normal practice is, the clerk calls us into his office to discuss what that item is. Never, ever, prior to the meeting, did Bob Marasco say to the council, "I received a statute from the Corporation Council. It is important as a council, prior to the meeting, that we talk about this and what possible implications it has." That's significant, because that points to collusion between the clerk and the administration, and if true, that's a serious, serious matter. Now, I want to talk about this whole idea of the quorum. The mayor, in his response, and it was online, NJ.com, he said that he jumped in because there was an absence of a quorum. The best I understand, a quorum is only used to start a meeting and to end a meeting. And if you look at the statute, it says that they rely on, it says, "An absence of insufficient voters." Well, there were seven people when the clerk said, "Who's here?" Seven people said that they were here. At that point, the mayor relying on his own statute, which is flawed and trumped, as Councilman Rice said, by more controlling statute, he was at the back of the room. Everybody saw him. He should have turned around and left because it didn't satisfy that requirement. The other requirement is that you have a tie. As we know, Councilman Rice wasn't here. And so four plus four equals a tie. So even if you rely on the statute that the mayor uses, none of those two criteria were satisfied, and so it should have ended right there. But when you look at that first criteria, the absence of a quorum, if we don't have four people, and it's happened once, since I've been here for two and a half years, we've canceled a meeting. So if you don't have a quorum, there's no meeting, period. So he couldn't have relied on that. So I want to say, we're gonna pursue this vigorously, and through Facebook and other social media, all of us have gotten tens of thousands of concerns, and saying to us to stay the course, and I say this to all of our residents in this city, and all of the help, because this isn't, it's not local, this is national. This mayor at the Democratic National Convention, and we're getting a copy of that tape right now, espoused the virtues of democracy. He said it's not about Democrat, Republican, it's about all of us. But that just must apply outside the city limits of Newark. And so there is this schizophrenia that this mayor has. When he's all outside of the city, he talks about these wonderful things, but then he has his henchmen and political hacks weighing terror on the people and on this process. But I'm so proud to be supported by three incredible individuals that I would walk through fire with and go to war with every single day of the week and twice on Sunday. But this, it's not over, it's just started. Thank you.
So I'm happy that everyone, again, as my council colleague said, have come out today. It is a sad day in the city of Newark. Councilwoman Crump made an analogy to the 1967 rebellion and a division that the city felt at that time period. It is the same division that is looming over the city today, and it hasn't been started this time by a police officer beating a taxi driver. It has actually been begun by Modiya Butler in his own admittance, under the direction of the mayor of our city, who purposefully divided this city in order to take power from the people. I believe that him, all the way down, the mayor and everybody else that participated in it, from the business administrator to the Corporation Council, to Bob Marasco, and to the four council people who allowed themselves to be used as pawns to steal power from the people. This is the mayor's opportunity to show the state that he could be governor. So his effort to be the governor, his first act is to take power from the people of Newark. And so he could be more mean and ruthless than Christie can himself, so he can prove to, he could prove to the rest of the state of New Jersey that he too can separate blacks and Latinos, that he too can take power from us and render our voice useless, so you can also give me your vote. This is what the mayor did today. And Anibal Ramos joined him in that. He joined him in that because he wants to be the mayor of this city. He wants to be the mayor of this city, and so his act in being the mayor of the city is to galvanize Latino votes against African-American people. I think that is shameful. It is something out of the past, and it needs to be stopped immediately. I think that anybody who would do anything for power deserves no power at all. So the act that they committed in here last night was a crime. It was a crime. It was a crime against everybody who voted in the election, in every prior election in this city, they committed a crime. They committed a crime against all of the people who voted even for John James. They committed a crime against those people. They committed a crime against all of these faces that you see on this wall that have ran for office and have won. They've committed a crime against the first black mayor, when black people had to galvanize themselves in order to get representation in this city. And the only way we won in this town is when blacks and Latinos united to bring the mayor in this town. The only people that benefit from the division of blacks and Latinos are the enemies of our people, and so people who do that must be the enemies of our people. And today, going forward, they will be treated as such. I, as a councilman, and every citizen of the South Ward was completely disrespected last night. They totally disregarded all rules and regulations of council protocol. The acting president did not change the order of business to begin a special vote. The meeting was not called for to have a vote on the vacated seat. He snuck that in there, and in his attempt to sneak that in there, he thought that we were gonna sit back and allow it to happen. So I spoke up immediately. He refused to recognize me as I asked for the floor. He purposefully disregarded his colleague, and many times I had disagreed with him, I would have never purposefully disregarded him. But the real problem is, he purposefully disregarded democracy. And I want to close on this. I had the pleasure of taking a vacated seat before. So when Councilman Donald Tucker, may he rest in peace, passed away, I took his seat because I was the next highest vote getter. Now, I want to say this, because everybody didn't support that. So, and that's their prerogative. And you know what we did? We had a debate in the council chambers. People were allowed to speak, and there was a long debate before there was a vote. There was nobody, Mayor James didn't sneak down here and have a vote, there was no backdoor deals to ruse me in as the councilman. We debated, we debated openly, openly in public, like democracy is supposed to be. These people are afraid of democracy. They don't like the mess, they don't like the yelling, they don't like the back and forth, because ultimately, they don't believe in democracy. Because the democratic thing to do was to, would be to have us debate the issue on the floor and then decide after a debate. But they purposefully ignored me, brought the mayor in as he waited in the wings at the back door, rushed in here. The mayor has never come to any of these meetings. Never. When we discussed the MUA and asked him to come, he's never shown up. When we discussed our taxes and asked him to come, he never shows up. When we called him to discuss the accelerated tax scale, he never showed up. We called him to discuss the watershed and the appointment of a director to the water department, he never shows up. Whenever there's a real issue in the city that needs to be resolved, the mayor is nowhere to be found. The only way you can see the mayor is if you turn on Meet the Press, and he's talking about something on Meet the Press. The real issue is, we need a mayor. If we had a fire department that was supported, he wouldn't have to put out fires. If we had a police department that he didn't lay off, he wouldn't have to chase criminals down the street. If we had a sanitation department that had snow, pick up our own snow, he wouldn't have to shovel people's snow in the yard. If we had an infrastructure that was able to deal with a storm, then he wouldn't have to feed people in his damn home. We need a leader of this city, we don't need a cheerleader, we don't need a Boy Scout, and we don't need Superman. Hey, D'Pla? Hey, D'Pla? Are there, are there any questions? Yes, Dave? We're talking to legal representation, because obviously, we can't get Corporation Council to represent us, because again, they have not represented this entire council, only a select few. So we are looking at legal counsel right now, and they will divide, they will tell us exactly what the next steps going forward are. Yes? Yeah. If I could, I'd like to actually bring somebody who was actually affected by this. I'm gonna let Councilman Baraka address this, but Earl Best, no better known as Street Doctor, was the victim, was the victim of the police action that's here, and as he comes forward, as he comes forward, just make it brief though, Street, I need you to make it brief. What I also need to say is this, somebody mentioned it before, about when the mayor has not come before the council. This council did an investigation into alleged disparity and discrimination of black and Latino officers within the Newark Police Department. We've also raised the issue of police brutality and harassment. We had to go outside of the city government to work with the ACLU in order to bring federal action on the city of Newark, because again, the mayor was not there. And so this is a case that needs to be referred to. The action that took place last night amongst a lot of folks, Councilman Baraka's mother being one of the affected ones, Rahman Mohammed, the president of SEIU Local 617, Dr. Earl Best, who also was affected, those kind of things need to be brought to the federal investigation as well for further investigation as part of the overall federal investigation going forward. Doctor, Doctor Earl Best?
Very briefly, I don't want to take too much time. I spoke to some of y'all downstairs. First of all, God, I love you. I'm hoping that Rahman Mohammed, he's not here with us. They locked him up, I was in the hospital with him. It started right here. The last I remembered was I fell, I fell there, I broke a little bone. And show them that real quick. That hat there, Sharif, right there. Show that, give me that. Yeah, I'm gonna give you what really happened. That's my hat, it's still there. Right? This the hat I had on, I had cashmere on and all that stuff, that's all gone from the spray. But I want to make this real, very briefly. That spray, everybody's saying, "Prepper spray and all that," I don't know what kind of spray that was. That spray was so strong, right? People in the audience in the balcony was coughing. I got sprayed right here. We got the film where they said he came around. He sprayed the whole can in my eyes and in my mouth, cut my whole thing off, and that's when I fell. And I want to thank the people that helped me that day with all that confusion. So that's the only thing I just want to say, that's what really happened.
Well, I think that what actually happened is, I don't think that they took into account when they planned this in the back room, that the people would be this frustrated and upset by them stealing from them. And so people responded, they responded loudly, they responded disruptively, and they responded in a way that people respond when they're angry. I think the police that were here tried their best to calm the crowd down. There was an officer who indiscriminately pulled out his mace, a captain, as a matter of fact, and sprayed it into the crowd, and sprayed, not only Street Doctor, sprayed Rahman Mohammed, but he also sprayed my mother. I was infuriated at that, and you know, I made a, that day, that moment, I said to myself that they've already committed an act of war. And so from now going forward, you know, yes, I look at it as an act of war. To spray mace in a crowded area, in a close area like this, doesn't even seem to be a part of your training. So I think there needs to be an immediate investigation, and we're gonna have an immediate investigation on that, and I think that officer needs to be removed from the force, and he's suspended for what he did that day, because not only did he spray them, he sprayed other officers. I had to give an officer here water to wipe out his face and eyes as I stood here, because he was in the line crying and tearing because of the mace that was sprayed here. So that officer needs to be removed immediately, and that is a high-ranking officer who did that. Let me get somebody that hasn't asked a question yet, one, and then...
Right, you mentioned the possibility of legal action, Councilman. When would that happen?
Again, I couldn't hear.
You mentioned the possibility of legal action to prevent this from, to prevent the ascension of...
Yes, no, we're hoping to file, if we can't get it filed today, I mean, we're also in the course of looking for attorneys who will do this. The trouble we're having, a lot of attorneys who do business for the city are a little nervous about coming out and actually representing us. And so we're trying to find independent lawyers who don't have business with the city, not looking for business with the city, and won't be necessarily affected or fearful of political action. We want to file today. But understand that we have a holiday on Thanksgiving and Friday. It might not be till Monday that we can file, but as soon as humanly possible that we identify legal services, and we have a few in the mix, we just haven't decided on one yet. We want it just done as soon as humanly possible. Yes, Dave? Hold on a second.
Why weren't you present at the meeting last night?
Very simple, because the statute says quite clearly that the mayor cannot vote unless there is a tie. We had intelligence that told us what happened last night with some of our members was going to happen. There were members of my colleagues, and that's why I preference my remarks by saying, for six years, we've been able to talk about everything. But for some reason, the last week and a half or so, several members of our council colleagues have not been available to talk about this appointment, have not been available to talk about this vacancy, have been going around at different places talking about who's gonna be council president, who they're gonna make council person, and how this is certain people's time and not other people's time. And so in order to stop the melee that did take place last night, some of us thought it was in the best interest of us to make sure that a vote did not happen. And so I purposely stayed away and boycotted a meeting that I knew people were in collusion with to try and deny and defeat the process that should have happened amongst my colleagues first, because we didn't even have the chance to even use the 30-day calendar to make our decision, to debate who should get the nomination, or no one should get it, and it should go to a vote. That's because certain people... That's because certain people, again, and I say this with all sadness in my heart, because our colleagues and us have a very good relationship, and we've always been able to work things out, and when we couldn't work out, we would agree to disagree. There has been a silence, and I know where it came from, I know what office it emanates from, and it stinks to high heaven. And the reality is, my mother always says, "Tell the truth," tell the truth and shame the devil, that's what I always like to say. Because the reality is this, we can't allow, in this time, for people of any hue, of any position, to divide this city. The stakes are high, and conditions are too difficult. We need to be pulling together like we did with Hurricane Sandy as a city, regardless of race, regardless of ward, regardless of ethnicity, regardless of belief, we have to do those kinds of things. And so, the reason why I'm really mad is because we tried, I did my action to avert a melee, to avert violence, and what happened was, the mayor violated this very statute we used to stop the violence, he did it, and he incited the riot that actually happened in this place here, let's make that perfectly clear. I want to recognize the mayor.
The meeting before that, the question was put to the council, city clerk, by Councilman Barack.
Hold on, please, folks.
When are you going to address the vacancy on the city council? The agenda last night did not contain the question of the issue of filling the vacancy. I would like to know that the members of the council haven't added starter, or any other agenda that would bring to the attention of the citizens of Newark and the members of the council, that this important decision would be addressed at the council meeting. It's not on the agenda, was there an added starter? And then, secondly, and I apologize for being long, if this is going to be a legal matter, and the city clerk is in collusion with the administration, will the council subpoena the tape of the council meeting where you have verbatim, word for word, what transpired last night? Because I was sitting here last night, I did not hear what they say, "The mayor was sworn in," and I did not hear other votes they're talking about. Thank you.
Okay, so the short answer to the two questions is, no, there was nothing in the agenda, and yes, we're going to subpoena, but we've got another tape of the full, everything that happened. But the importance of that first question, we're in a holiday season, right, tomorrow is Thanksgiving, so just imagine if four council colleagues decided that they were going to leave town and go see their friends. And if you look at the statute that the mayor relies on, he says "an absence of a quorum." So, nothing, as you said, is on the agenda, we would have had no knowledge that this important vote would have taken place, four council people possibly theoretically could have been away, and the mayor would have relied on that to say, "You know what, there's no quorum, I'm going to slither in here and cast the vote." Normally what happens, now, and I ask people to really consider this, right, we're probably into day eight of the 30-day, and so there is no history or record of the council deadlocking on all these critical issues, this isn't day 29 or day 30, where the city is about to go over the cliff, and the mayor's got to rush in and exercise his authority under some statute, there's plenty of time for this council amongst each other to do what we normally do without the mayor's interference. So that should be the most glaring sign, that this thing was concocted and thought up a long time ago, and they were going to spring this on the public. And as Councilman Barack, Councilwoman Crump, and Rice said, "We suspected at the last minute that something was going to happen, so we prepared the best that we could, and we thought we had it covered." And I think when it goes to court, I think we will be vindicated, that only in the case of a tie is the mayor allowed to cast the deciding vote.
We'll take one more question that's out here. I'm sorry, Dave, hold on one second before you get the mic, so you can get on camera.
You just said in case of a tie, but by my count, it seems like it's four to four now. So, even if this thing is thrown out by the courts, when you come back again, what do you foresee happening in terms of, do you hope to win another vote, I guess, is my question?
Well, the issue is simple, that there are a lot of options that the council has that we were never allowed to even look at, investigate. The statute is clear, and it's a good thing, because it's crystal clear and very specific. And that's why I say it trumps the general sort of catch-all statute that the mayor's relying on about his vote. We can decide to vote for a candidate, and we will debate that as colleagues debate, because it's our power. We can say, "No to one person," "Yes to one person," "No to everybody," and have the citizens of the city of Newark vote for that person. We never had the opportunity. Why? Because after six years of us being able to do those kinds of things as a council, some kind of way, because election season is upon us in a year and a half, some people decided that we want to start lining up our ducks in a row right now. And that doesn't mean that there are others who want to run also, but the fact of the matter is, we could still be able to do the business of the people in a transparent, accountable way, respectful of each other, as colleagues, in order to run this city, without having to stoop to the kind of things that normally happen in the course of campaigns. We've had enough of that. I had enough of Mitt Romney and Romnesia and those kind of tactics. I don't need the colleagues who I trust with my back, in order to have me to serve and bring services and goods to the residents of the West Ward, I should not be wondering who has my back when it comes to actually who should be our leadership, or who should be serving with us. I should not have departments, entire departments, talking to some council people and not to others about the process, that we all by law are responsible being participants of. I should not have to hear about the mayor and the chief of staff on television, on Twitter, and other places, talking about them manipulating this process. And lastly, we should not have this process being diddled with, touched, or manipulated by anybody that happens to live on Mount Prospect, plays in a mansion. The reality is, if you don't stand for office, if you don't stand before the voters for office, you have no right and no ability to get involved with people who are elected to pick a person to be in that vacancy seat. And so, we're upset, we're hot, and we're mad. But the best thing to do is not to be hot and mad in a vacuum, it's to do something. And so, I'm asking everyone here, in the sound of my voice, to kill a neighbor who didn't know about the situation, we hope we've gotten some clarity, and wake them up. We will have rallies next week, but we will continue this thing, from block to block, from house to house, from neighborhood to neighborhood, from ward to ward. This is one city, this is one family, and it's about time we start acting like it, and stop the divisive factors in this. I love everyone in my town who loves my town as much as I do, and we need to stand united against anybody that's going to play us, because the cows have come home, and the chicken has come home to roost, and it's time for us to start acting like it and living like it. One last comment by the councilwoman, then we're going to call it, and individual council members will be here for individual talking as well.
Thank you, I've been asked to speak to the issue of the passion that has been demonstrated over the last two years, I mean, two days. Some media, hopefully none of you who are present, characterize last night's meeting as a group of unruly people. No, no, this was the television, I'm not, let me finish, let me finish. This, the media defined this as a group of unruly citizens. Nothing was further from the truth. It was a group of citizens who became unruly in the face of manipulation of justice. So, we're asking the media to please characterize us as we are. We are Newarkers who love Newark, who serve Newark, pay taxes, home own, I don't know if the mayor even owns a house in the city of Newark, does he pay taxes? But I didn't mean to go there, Larry. So, the final and critical point is that, you know that since 2010, there has been a major discussion about the MUA, and whether we will or will not have an MUA. And thanks to the council members behind me, not those who are absent, we were able to stave off, to fight off, the mayor's determination to give this city an MUA after 5,000-plus voters representing many families said, "We don't want it." And so, many people have asked us, "Why? Why did this happen?" I'm here to tell you what the answer is. Ms. Bate, a woman, the mayor cannot use this against me, Ms. Bate will give the mayor his fifth vote for the MUA. So we ask, we ask that you be mindful of what the real result is, when you, as the media, describe our passion for what takes place here in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Thank you.